The Cook County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for October 18th, 2016. We will start with the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I have one adjustment to the agenda. Commissioner Jewell asked us to consider this document that you just received. What I'm asking is us to consider putting it on a future agenda. But it has, he needs it by November 1st, so it would have to be next week's. But we'll discuss that under Commissioner Concerns. Is there anything else? Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
So we have Severson and Storley.
Didn't I just say I've told you anymore?
Nope, we got it out. Any objections? All in favor?
Aye.
Public comment? Either one of you want to talk to us? Consent agenda. Would anyone like to pull any items from the consent agenda? Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Can I get a second? A second. Severson? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I have three revolving loan fund requests. Last couple of meetings. The first one on the list, I'm going to ask to read table.
Can I get a motion to table, the first one?
And I haven't even had a chance to talk to Gary, who was at the meeting. I understand this morning that if you look at the minutes on the backside of that, it was motion by Erickson, Second Greenwood, to have Scott Harrison, Bruce Kerfer approach Grand Bay State Bank and ask them to reset the loan. And we believe that they had, and word this morning is that they haven't. So our recommendation right now is moved. We have to go back, we'll have to meet again on this. Let me ask you to put that one.
Just Madam Chair, Brady, just for clarification, having been part of that discussion, that moving forward with the parameters set by the revolving loan committee, that that discussion was going to be ahead with the bank, and then they came back and said, fine, but then as of today, there's a change, and we don't necessarily know the response to that, so that the board understands.
We at least have to clarify it, because we got word by email that that was going to happen, and then I got a phone call this morning saying that, no, it isn't. It hasn't happened.
This was out of town all last week.
Okay. And so I guess one thing, just from a context standpoint, would be that if they were looking at the agenda item that's out there and understood the parameters there, but that hadn't been defined, in other words, it hadn't been agreed to, that they're responding in regard to that, or if it's just a natural progression, not responding because it's an agenda item. You know what I'm saying?
No, I think, I mean, they went to ask for that, and thought they had that answer.
Right.
But now there's no confirmation of this.
That's right. And my question was just if the response from the bank is because it was an agenda item, and they wanted to clarify, or if it was just a natural progression.
I don't think so, because I understood that they actually closed on that loan, with the understanding that we were going to go ahead with ours.
Okay, well, anyway, I'll be started.
But ours was dependent on the reset of the loan.
Sure.
And maybe there's some other, you know, negotiation that'll have to happen, or we could agree to.
Let's go to table.
But I think that, at the very least, the committee needs to meet and consider that.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion to table?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Board of Commissioner Storley? Any further discussion? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
The second request, Mike Larson, probably trying to be here where it's on the schedule, but if there are any questions, just know that he's probably on his way.
We can't hold off on that one until further in the meeting.
Yeah, if you'd like to. And then the third one is the Headstrom loan. This is a request to, first, to amend the orig, not Headstrom, Samari.
I was going to say.
Sorry, Samari loan. This is one that was approved, we agreed to subordinate our mortgage to the existing mortgage of 171, or nothing in maximum, 171, 600, which was in our mortgage, but it came back larger because the applicants amended their plan, made their living space larger, and costs from the construction came back larger in the year plus during the time since they first made the application, which our committee believes we have sufficient collateral. They also had a commercial review of the value, and the total with our loan and the bank loan is, we're at 79 percent, so there's a lot of room there, plus we have also a mortgage on a property in Otterdale County, and they just gave me information two days ago that they had paid off 10,000 of that. So we have a fair amount of room on that one, too. So there's lots of collateral. So we're in agreement to go ahead and subordinate to the new amount of 227,625. So that's the request from Samari. So they would amend our mortgage to allow that amount. And then the second agreement then is the subordination of our mortgage to that mortgage of 225,625.
This was presented to the EDA last week, and that was approved unanimously also, since it's on the business book. So we'll start with discussion. Commissioner Severson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, it's just clear that it's, we're just moving from 171 to 227. We had agreed to subordinate, before we were agreed to subordinate, now, just a large amount, seems, um, important to me. Thank you.
Commissioner Moe?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Brady. So the assets that are put up as collateral would be more than, as you said, more than enough to pay, to pay off the loan if necessary, so the risk for the county is very limited. Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Moe?
Thank you, Madam Chair, with your support.
Commissioner Storley?
I have no questions for you to support.
Can I get a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the amendment to mortgage dated January 8th, 2016, between Samari Properties and LLC mortgager and Cook County mortgagee to increase and not exceed the principal balance that the mortgagee will subordinate to from 171,600 to 227,625.
Can I get a second?
Support.
Any further discussion?
Madam Chair, on all of these, I failed again to put it on there, but I remembered, please add the language into authorize the board chair and the auditor to sign the loan documents.
Are you okay with that amendment?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that is added and approved. Any further discussion? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Jeff, is Todd coming in, or are you going to do that one?
I can certainly do that, Madam Chair.
Or you could just move on to class comp study in case Todd had to come in.
I think he was coming, but we can go, we can go to the class comp study, Madam Chair, if that's all.
Please.
So we're at that point in the class comp study where we need to confirm our market peer group, and we had this conversation at the Personnel Committee meeting end of September. And Commissioner Gamble submitted a couple of questions, and I hope those were addressed in the consultant's response. Essentially, Commissioner Gamble asked why some of the counties who are closer to us in population hadn't been included, and the answer was they hadn't participated in the salary study. And we're choosing the market, our market peer group, based on people who are smaller than us and up to two times our population, and including a few others because of the narrowness of that market. But mostly people who have participated in the salary survey, so that this portion of the research design is not the thing that slows us down and stops us from meeting our goal of December 31st. So having had that conversation, and then also understanding that this market, this peer group, and the market research portion of this is not the commitment of funds, our implementation plan, and our determination and discussion as a board of where we need to position ourselves within the market once we have this study, is the portion of the compensation study that's going to have a financial implication. So right now, this is the research, this is the background information, this is taking an assessment of the data that's available. Additionally, the question has come up several times about including compensation and benefits. And in the discussion about compensation and benefits, I'll be individually surveying the administrators or coordinators in all of these counties and getting some information related to their benefits, the employee share of the benefits that they're paying, and the types of benefits that they're offering, so that we have some of that other additional information to include in our conversation when we're determining where we ought to be within the marketplace after we get this research to come in. So today, really what we're asking is, we're asking for a confirmation of the revised peer group selection as proposed by Soto Abu from Keystone Consulting.
Okay, discussion, Commissioner Storley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as far as who's on this committee, there's Judy, yourself.
The, most of the review of this proposal is being run through the Personnel Committee, but as far as the, as the point context, as the staff context, it's myself and Judy who are working this stuff in the background.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, in looking at, when we looked at this, and just looking at comparable counties, and had done a study in conjunction with Commissioner Bartenson, in which we were looking at comparable counties, and that's why the recommendation for Grant and Big Stone and one other that was not included, and it was indicated by Mr. Soto that the reason it wasn't is because they didn't participate, so there wasn't any, any findings. And then removing a couple of larger counties, Chippewa and Fairbowl, and he also said he removed Pennington. The one question I would have is that when we look at Jackson County, which was one that identified, that Jackson County doesn't participate completely, as do the others in this, in the survey study. So I'm wondering, given the fact that they don't have that completeness, how that might, I don't necessarily want to say skew, but if you're, if you're taking comparables on all, all different, you know, the metrics here, it would seem maybe Jackson County might not provide what we need, but he would know better than that. But that's one question I had. And then the other thing is, just appreciate that the, that the study will include looking at these comparable groups, the benefit. And if there's a list like what we have in our, our benefits that is a grid, then, you know, we might have, as was mentioned by Grace this morning, there's a benefit that we provide that's really appreciated, maybe somebody else doesn't offer that. But if we have our, our matrix that has a list of all those benefits, and we can find out the extent in which they are offered, and the price at which they're paid, anyway.
Thank you, Commissioner. I've asked Judy to update our benefits summary, which would be a one or two-page document, and that's exactly what I'm asking from these other coordinators, for a benefit summary sheet, and then also information basically on their healthcare plan, because the healthcare plan and the employer-employee split in the payment on that healthcare plan, that's the, that's the single biggest dollar amount that relates to that. But then we're also going to ask for a benefit summary, so we can compare other things that may not have the same financial impact, but, but maybe the thing that people appreciate.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Commissioner Moe?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, thanks, Jeff. And the, as to the benefits, I mean, it's not, it, when we, when we go to comparing the wages, it'll be concrete, more concrete and succinct, but in the benefit package that the other counties are, because I think it'll be, it'll be more difficult to quantify that. But we can at least get a picture of comparable counties as to, you know, what their benefits are as compared to ours. And we talked about this in the Personnel Committee also, but maybe you could address, there are other large public employers in particular who have, who employ similar employees in the county, and you can, maybe you can address how the class comp study will take that into account as well.
Based on, thank you, Commissioner, for your question. Based on the consultant's response to that, it's beyond their scope and capacity to include that information. If we want to include that information, that's going to be on our staff time to do that. So basically, I'm asking for direction. Do you want us to take the time to survey, and who, what would that look like, and who would that include? It's, it's a difficult process. It's going to require a lot of time if we do that.
Madam Chair, Jeff, I, and maybe this is something we can, we can, we have, when we meet with the Personnel Committee, too, we can flush out a little bit more. I would think that there would be value in our class comp study to other public employers, and maybe there's a way we could share information with them in exchange for comparable information from them, you know, and so it's something maybe we can pursue.
Commissioner, between now and, and our next Personnel Committee meeting, let me reach out to those HR, between myself and Judy, reach out to those HR department heads at, at the school, at the hospital, people who have big systems like that, and ask, talk about the process we're going through, and talk about opportunities to learn from each other, and see if there's something that comes out of that.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Just to remind the board, if we can add any more homework, the discussions that Commissioner Gamble and Jeff and I had with the unions, that we assured them that this would be done this year, and we put in promises for their financial reimbursements if we don't do it on time like we promised, so just take that into consideration. There's going to be a financial cost to add more burden to the process, and there's also the financial cost that we will have to pay to each employee. So just a reminder of that. Commissioner Severson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. That's a, that's a really interesting point that confuses me even more. So, so the reason to reduce this list, is it for the reasons of getting the job done quicker and cheaper?
No, Commissioner, the, this was the original proposed list for market study, was a list of comparable counties.
Right.
The fact that it's been reduced by a few, and a few have been added, have been a result of people's particip, individual counties' participation in the, in the wage study, or in salary survey.
Okay, so it's.
So really, from, from the consultant, this is, this has been within the scope of his proposal from the very beginning. The fact that we want some other comparables within the community has not, has also not changed.
Right.
Commissioner Moe and Gamble have represented that through this entire process, and we'll find a way to, to work that in. The, the point and the reason that we need to make a move, make a decision today on the market study is so that we don't tap into the deadline and the timeframe. And we also realize that the additional stuff, that, the additional information that Commissioner Moe and Gamble are asking for, stuff that we can do outside of the consultant going forward with their market research, and we can provide, it's going to be a lot more subjective in nature, but it's also going to provide some context whereby we understand, you know, you know, in a situation where we have, where we have a staff person leave us to go work at the hospital or the school.
Right.
And then six months later, they turn around and they say, well, maybe it wasn't greener over there, and they look at.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a, it's a small, it's a small community, that, those kinds of things happen.
Yeah.
So the, the more information that we share among the large public employers, the better off we're going to be anyway.
Right.
So we'll, we'll follow up on those requests, and we can take those into account as we're looking for more for our subjective question later of where do we position ourselves within the market? And for our purposes, the market is also going to include local makeup.
So back to that, so this list is being recommended, this final list, 22, is being recommended by the Personnel Committee and you, and?
It has been submitted by the consultant as saying this is.
Okay.
This is statistically relevant, this does what we need it to do, and it's based on available, available data. Based on that, the Personnel Committee had some questions and made some recommendations, and again, Commissioner Gamble had one more question about Jackson County, whether that's still a suitable comparison.
I'm curious why Crow Wing is on the new list, or, I mean, it's recommended here, but anyway. Just under the, I mean, Crow Wing is recommended here, and, but it's not on the list, but maybe these are.
There's, there is an initial list that was submitted.
And Crow Wing wasn't on that either.
And, right. And then we've got a, we've got a current peer list, which is basically based on those who have actually participated in the, in the study and have data that we could use.
So if we add any more right now, if we mess with this list as it is, we're going to?
Not necessarily. We can ask, if you have another question, I'm happy to forward Commissioner Gamble's question about Jackson County, is that suitable? So if, if you would ask, if you, in the interest of time, if you had another question like that, that you would like me to ask, let's define the question, I'll ask the question, we'll confirm with the consultant whether or not that's suitable, or whether or not that impacts the timeframe, and, and then you would give me the authority to approve the list going forward after we've asked those questions, and then I'll share the information and the responses to those questions with you, rather than wait till the next meeting for an approval. So, so I can get this crossed off and down, and down the road this week.
So this would, the action would now be to move ahead pending answering of the questions that Commissioner Severson had.
I, I think that's, I think that's fair.
Okay. Can I get a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the amended market peer group list for the Keystone Consulting Class Comp Study, with the understanding that Commissioner Gamble and Commissioner Severson's questions about that list will be forwarded to Keystone.
Is there a second?
I'll sit.
Commissioner Gamble, any other question?
Yeah, just to, to understand how this list was proposed, that, that the consultant made a recommendation based upon, you know, his expertise in looking at comparable counties. When I looked, and the Personnel Committee looked at the list, I had some questions relative to the relevance of some of the counties that were listed there, given the demographics. So the criteria that is looked at is, one is demographic, and the other, and they said in that regard, will go, you know, a certain percentage underneath and a certain percentage over relative to where your population might be. So that meant, meant that the higher populations that are on the top end of population, why would we want to include those in there, especially when we have a greater percentage of those higher than we do that are similar to our demographic? So the adjustment that was made was to represent more counties that are closer in our demograph, and fewer on the high end, which was 9 to 6. And, and if we were limited because of the cost of the study to a certain dollar amount, and we have to keep within a certain number, then we could adjust it accordingly. So the criteria is, how many is allowed for within the study? How close are we in our match to our similar demographic? And the third that came up as a result of the response from Soto was, they did, some of the counties suggested did not participate, so we wouldn't have any information. And now because Lincoln is on, it doesn't have a lot of this information, is it still viable in this study? So in response to Crow Wing, I would look at Crow Wing relative to the demographic issue as to whether it's similar. The other component is the, the fact that the study takes into consideration, Jeff, what, what other county was it that has a swell in population because of tourism?
To, to clarify, it was Crow Wing. So Crow Wing was not actually being proposed as a comparable. He was using it as an example of how that county's resources are taxed by more than just the local population.
Yeah.
Yes.
So he's not, he's not adding Crow Wing to the list of people that we might want to consider.
Okay.
As comparables. He's simply saying that they face this, we face a challenge similar to what Crow Wing does, and that is providing services to way more than the residential population of this county.
And that component is, is interesting. I mean, it'd be interesting to understand how he applies that relative to a percentage of. It's, it's a reality that we have more people to serve during certain months, and that's similar in other counties. So that should be taken into consideration, but how that plays out in, in the analysis would be interesting to understand.
So if I, if I may represent Commissioner Severson's question to be, and Commissioner Gamble's restatement of that is, is, okay, so where you see this kind of a seasonal or this kind of a non-residential, what kind of an impact does that have? What kind of an, an impact have you seen that have in, in other studies? So if I, if I can rephrase your question to mean, we want to talk about Crow Wing County, but we typically, we specifically want to talk about the impacts of non-residential significant population on the cost of government in the county?
Yes.
Okay.
That's, yeah, it's not Crow Wing specific, it's more about the concept.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
So we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Todd, you're up.
Thank you. Please pardon my tardiness. We had a taxpayer in the office that needed some attention.
Got your priorities right.
Here today to, to recommend a new hire for a residential appraiser. His name is Robert J. Thompson. He is currently from Tonka Bay, on the western edge of the Twin Cities. Interesting background, he has been an appraiser since 2003. He's also, it seems like his entire family is connected with assessing. He's already got his CMA, his Certified Minnesota Assessor's License, which he took the time to do on his own and go out and get the education and the CMA. His brother is a Scott County assessor, his sister works for Ramsey County for 20 years, and another sibling works for, for Hed ribbon County for a number of years. So he's been connected with assessing for a long time, so he's not, not a new person in the field. So he was the best candidate of the five that we chose, and we interviewed two people, and my recommendation is that we hire him starting next Monday. Hopefully, that is if he can find housing.
Yes.
Which of course is always a question.
The tempting season is.
Is there a discussion, Commissioner Severson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So just for clarification, he sounds great, but, so what will the new assessor's office look like when it's fleshed out?
Well, I'm a third.
Okay.
Robert will be, we're going to call him Bob, he prefers to be called Bob. He will be the second main person that does field work along with myself. Rachel is in the process of, we've got her tentatively scheduled for all the classes she needs, starting in the, luckily, the Department of Revenue and the MWAO have changed their, their scheduling of classes. Instead of having them in June and July, when we need to be out in the field the most, they're starting in January, February, and March. So she'll be able to get those classes done this winter, on the road to her, after 12 months of actually being named in the position, then she can become a Certified Minnesota Assessor. So that's, and I will use Rachel, when she's ready, we will use her in the field for a lot of new construction and things that we can do en masse, do in pairs, like resorts next year up to Gunfoot Trail. We'll probably go as a, as an entire office to do those, because there's so many, so many buildings. That'll be good, a good learning experience for Rachel. You know, I think this will help the office in the long run, because it's going to help Rachel understand what we do in the field, as well as the technical work that she does. So our office is definitely changing, but I'm, I'm really hopeful with, with Mr. Thompson, and that he's got, I don't think it's going to be a lot of training, I'll, I should, some computer training, Lisa's going to help him on our, our systems in the office, and I'll probably take him out for maybe a week in the field, and then I'll send, set him loose, because I, he's, he's got enough experience in both construction and appraising and the assessing fields.
Commissioner Moe?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Todd. I don't know what it is, I mean, you, you've attracted this person immediately to, to the office, somebody who had, speaking to Lisa yesterday, with remarkable experience and capability already. Maybe it's your good fortune, or, or recruiting skill, or some combination thereof?
I think it's good fortune. I mean, we, I feel that we were lucky that we had a response, that he actually mentioned to me that he only applied for two assessors' positions in the state of Minnesota. One was the city of Bloomingdon, and he really didn't want to be in the city anymore. He has spent time here in, in Cook County in the past, done camping and things up to Gunfoot, so he's not unfamiliar. I think he's getting his first taste of, of living here by, by trying to find housing. So we're all trying to help with that, and, you know, get him online with, with something that's, because he wants to buy within the year. So, yeah, I think we got lucky with, with his application. So, yeah, I think we got lucky with, with his application.
Great. I have a couple ideas on housing, so I can talk to you after.
Great. Anything you need to ask, is anybody can make, pass on.
Thank you.
Jen could move up the trail and he could borrow her nicely remodeled piece of roll out. We could talk. Commissioner Gamble?
Just appreciate, appreciate the work and it's encouraging. I'm sure you're encouraged stepping into your new role and, and changes that are in place with putting together a team. And I, I would agree that the apprenticeship opportunities that you have, just, it's, it's going to grow your staff in that regard. So just looking forward to the results. It sounds like he comes from a family that has the government service genetic gene, so.
That, that was a surprise to me. Not everybody picks the field of assessing.
They don't, huh?
It'd be interesting to know their ancestry and what they went through, what war.
Exactly.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, right on there, Todd. It was great that you found a good fellow. And assessing in some respects for people is in their heritage and in others it's a struggle, but it sounds like he comes with a good background, so, thank you.
Can we get a motion?
Madam Chair, I'm moved to approve the hiring of Robert J. Thompson as our new staff assessor. Support?
Any further discussion? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thanks, Todd.
Thanks, Todd.
Thank you.
David?
Just had one item on the agenda for the board, kind of housekeeping item, but this is the final payment and acceptance of work for the State Project 16, 1661273, which is the Gunfoot Trail grading patuminous work that we did last year. KGM has requested a final payment of $96,154.50 for the project, which is their final closeout and essentially their retainage. The original bid amount was for $2,477,778.1 cents. The final construction cost was $1,896,371.24, which is about 92, 92.6% of the original bid. The savings were generally better than anticipated subgrade, subgrade conditions and then normal, normal deviations in quantities. The federal monies, this is paid for, we, we ended up with $583,853.19 of the construction, or federal monies for that. That was originally $500,000, but we were able to squeak another $83,000 and change from, from the feds on that. And then the balance was paid for with state aid. So we're recommending that the county board accept the project and authorize final payment in the, in that amount of $96,154.50 to KGM contractors.
Start with discussion, Commissioner Story.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, it's kind of nice to be able to pay something off and clear up the books and start from scratch on another project, so.
Yeah, we, we had a delay on that, and that was, we were ready to pay them last, last fall, but they got audited on a labor compliance issue. Actually, one of their subs did, so we had to hold, we had to hold on the payment. State wanted us to hold on payment on that, so we got that kind of cleared up and, or they got that cleared up and then we were able to make a payment, so.
That kind of makes you wonder why business wants to keep on keeping up.
Yeah, it's two years in a row, we've, two years in a row, we've had labor compliance audits on our contractors, so.
Different contractor?
Different contractor.
Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We didn't shake loose any free money, did we, between the savings on this, did we? It's just a submission that they pay what, what the billing is.
Yeah, you know, it's, um, well, actually, I'm going to ask you to clarify what you mean by that.
What I mean by that is that if we came in $97,000 under, that that doesn't mean, oh, good, we, we've got that pot of money then to apply elsewhere.
Yeah, it's, uh, yeah, we were under by 100, by 152,000 roughly. And that'll just stay in our state aid account and be used on future projects.
Okay, so in fact, that is, that is definitely our advantage. So it's not a direct bill, meaning that we wouldn't see the difference because we managed it well.
Right, exactly. So it's, it's money in, money out. The, the federal money, we spend way more than what we get. There's, federal money's capped at 80% of construction cost, and we're well over 80% of, or well under that 80% threshold. So that, that money from the feds that we got, the 83,000 extra for that. So we did actually gain a little bit. So we gained, not only were we under by 150,000 on our construction costs, but we were also got an additional 83,000 that, of federal money that we didn't have to use for state aid. So that just kind of helps our books a little bit, and we're kind of getting up against the, the bottom zero threshold of our state aid, so that helps a little bit, so.
Thank you.
Commissioner Moore?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, thank you, David. It's, that money will then go a little bit further. It'll impact the levy. And on the back end of that, some of those projects, we, that state aid money can go further and will have to use less of either the sales tax as starting next year or...
Yes.
Yeah, so.
So, yeah, so generally on the levy, it's not going to affect our levy, but it'll affect our, our, how much of the sales tax money we'll, we would have to use on a stated aid project, stated eligible project. Yeah, absolutely. Thanks.
Commissioner Severson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Dave, for all the conversations. It was really helpful to hear all those questions. But I'm ready to make a motion to recommend that we accept the project, or that we accept the project and authorize final payment in the amount of $96,154.50 to KGM contractors.
Can I get a second? Support? Any further discussion? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
David, we've got a letter in our packet that I don't want to get into right now because you just walked into here. But I would like it to be that subject to be on next week's agenda, if you have time, so that we can lay this whole thing to rest and there can stop being discussions about it during our meetings. Unless you want to talk about it right now.
What are we talking about?
The ATV Club has a request.
Okay.
Has to do with my love of going up the trail and some...
Oh, the signs?
Yes. Let's try not to say signs because we constantly get on Dave about signs. And so I didn't want to throw it at you now because you probably haven't read it.
No, I have not seen the letter.
So I would prefer that you see it, and I'm not saying that any of us agree with the letter, but I would like to have a signed discussion.
Okay.
And I know that you probably have data on its effectiveness and that we have not had accidents on the Gunfoot Trail and all that stuff. So if we could get it on an agenda and just talk about it.
Yeah, if I can get a copy of that letter, that'd be great.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Anything else?
That's it?
Thank you.
All right.
So this is a request from 47 North, 90 West Enterprises, revolving loan. As you can see, this came before the board a few weeks ago. And Mike is here, if you have any questions. But the, the minutes are on the back. There was a motion to approve a 20-year loan for $75,000 contingent upon Mike. And Steve's satisfying concerns that the building fund's cash flow can be supported by cascade vacation rentals. And we'll provide more information regarding the $125,000 other funding that will complete the financing packages. And we received sufficient information for the committee to feel good about that and made the recommendation to you to approve that loan last time. But Mike and Steve had reservations given the zoning there, and now we understand that they are satisfied with their position and ask that the request go forward at the meeting today.
Okay, so we'll start with discussion, as always. Mike is present, so if you have questions for Mike and or Brady, go ahead and ask them. Commissioner Severson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the reservations were satisfied. Do I even need to, should I ask that question? So, I mean, your reservations were satisfied, you're ready to go ahead. So, well, I think I should ask that question. So what, what's the result of that or what, what changed?
Nothing's changed. We just needed to just kind of retract a little bit. And look at our business plan and our performance, and we feel confident moving forward. The city has, however, extended the all brands, I guess, in one respect to work with them on this non-conforming language, which is kind of ambiguous, as you probably know from your experience. And I don't know where that's going to go, but we're, you know, we were thankful for that. Todd Millard actually reached out to us. And so, you know, we plan to participate with that and, and move forward. I mean, in essence, the, our original business plan never really has changed. It's just that, that got thrown up at us right away. So I may visit Todd shortly because we're still Texas a commercial building. No, just kidding. So no, nothing's changed. Our business plan has really never changed. But just when we learned that, it was like, whoa, okay, that's a different deal. We feel confident, fully confident moving forward with our plan. Thanks.
Thank you.
Commissioner Moore?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Brady, so there's some question about, about the city's zoning and if it's, if it's, maybe if it's advantageous or consistent for, for Mr. Larson and Mr. Serva. Was there any, so from your perspective, there's no, there's no ambiguity that is of concern to the county in that? As to, as to what the zoning is, if it would in some way impact the financial possibility for that property?
Well, we didn't think so during the committee meeting. And it was really what concerns they had regarding it, and apparently they've been satisfied.
So it wasn't your concern?
Yeah. So our concern about...
Because, because they've been using it as commercial, so maybe in some re, I don't know if they have to change. He says they're not changing the plans. The idea was there are commercial spaces downstairs and they remain, and just that they were going to alter the upstairs in some way to make, I think, more spaces for rental out there. And it seemed solid enough, like to us. We didn't see anything that was going to preclude that.
Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I think our, our position on the revolving loan committee is that, that as, you know, jurisdiction shared, you know, we're making a decision on the financial component and the city, in partnership with the city's responsibility relative to zoning, that it, it should be seen that we respect that it has to fit into the city's jurisdiction under the zoning and, and the financial component. We're ready to do that as long as we're not circumventing that. And if that is been satisfied, then we move forward. But we, we would not want to take an action that makes an assumption that tells the city that we aren't respecting, you know, what their requirement is.
I mean, yes, our business plan has not changed from once it was presented to you, Commissioner Gamble. It's, I mean, everything is basically, you know, we're not speculating any changes. It is what it is, and that's how we presented it to the board.
So it, we're all on board, basically, moving forward with what the intent of the business, and we're just affirming that through this component, which is the financing. Thank you.
Commissioner Story?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, it's great that we're all on board here and you pursued it and you went forward. As you do in all of your situations, you move forward, so I have no other questions. Ready to support?
Can I get a motion?
I will make a motion that we approve the 20-year revolving loan to Mike Larson and Stephen Serva, 47, well, I don't know if I need that. LLC, for purchase and remodel of the North Shore building at an interest rate of 1% over 10-year Treasury bond, with second position mortgage on the building as collateral.
With authority to Brady and Heidi decide?
With authority, yes. I guess we need to add that every time?
Yes. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
When you're in the assessor's office, he has somebody that needs a rental.
Make it to y'all.
How soon will that work be done?
It's right in January, all things being equal.
I need it by Monday.
He starts Monday, yes, so.
Okay, so interestingly enough, we made it through that. So Frank Jewell, St. Louis County Commissioner, I bumped into him over the weekend, and he sent to Jeff this letter. And what I'm asking is if we, if you are comfortable with Jeff writing up a letter of support for us to put in next week's packet for consideration of approval. Can I just get a show of hands of who's comfortable with that? Okay, and then we'll do the discussion next week, once the letter is written.
Madam Chair, to this point, Brady, this will, this will affect the, the funds that this, that Cook County gets. Time Black Nick funds will, should actually increase. Could you, is there a way, could you look at this and see if there's, what the financial implication would be for if that land was actually purchased by the Forest Service? And, and let us know as part of our discussion?
Yeah, definitely. We need to know that. Okay, so there's four of us, so that is an allowable action. It needs to be four to one. For your record, about Commissioner Gamble was not comfortable with that. We didn't vote, but just a general whether or not we should put it in the packet. Commissioner Gamble?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. And last time this came before us, when the Forest Service came before us, we, we voted in affirmation of moving forward with this hybrid. And we really, as a board, knew very little about it. And at that time, it suggested that we table it and get more information. So I appreciate the, the fact that if, if the information relative to land and the, basically the Wilderness Act and how it defines what we can, we cannot do in that regard. I mean, I think we should have information if we're going to support it, because the last time when we did this, we made a vote and we really self-confessed and didn't have information on it.
Yeah, so, and Jeff's writing out, so if there's anything else he can bring, I want us to be fully informed. So thank you, Commissioner Gamble. Is there any commissioner concerns, commissioner reports, meetings to note or meeting updates? Commissioner Severson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to piggyback on our celebration last week about Indigenous Peoples' Day. We had an event at the gallery this weekend where we bring in Arctic throat singers. And the Canadian Council General was at our presentation Saturday night. And he spoke to the issue of reconciliation with Indigenous Peoples and, and all the efforts that the Canadian government is doing to make that reconciliation. And it's pretty profound. In fact, we've had a number of Inuit presenters at the gallery who have worked on projects, creating monuments in these communities that were particularly hard, hard hit. But, so, so after he spoke, I just made the comment that we, as Cook County, made the, made the move last year to change from Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. And it got a huge hoot from the two performers who, so I just wanted to, I bring that up just because it, it affected our community in a big way. But also, there's a big ripple effect that, that goes out into the indigenous world that, that was positively affected by our small move too. That, so I just wanted to say yay for doing that, and it's a good thing.
And yay to Severson's gallery for continuing to champion Native American art and culture.
Commissioner Moore, you have your hand up?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Just a reminder that there will be a District One Town Hall meeting on Thursday at 6:00 at Holland Town Hall. Our administrator, Jeff Cadwell, will also be there to take questions, will present the county, the county budget and proposed maximum levy increase, as well as review the recently passed transportation sales tax, answer questions about that. Following that presentation, the Cook County EDA will be there to present their programs existing and, and planned, as well as taking input from District One constituents as to directions that they could or should go. So, thank you.
Commissioner Gamble, you have your hand up?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Just a question on claims, Brady, if you know this off the top of your head. One, one question I think Molly would be able to answer. The other is, the CR Building Specialist? What, what was that in conjunction with? If you want to look at that, then my question that Molly might be able to answer is, the Pierce Richards Law Office? Yeah, what, can you give us a little context to understand in those situations how that billable is?
Yes, so Pierce, Liz Pierce represents parents in, who have been petitioned against in child in Native Protectionary Services cases. And it relates to children who are in Native Protectionary Services. Native protection by nature of being neglected or abused. Those are the allegations. Those parents are entitled to court-appointed representation if their custody rights are at all being challenged. And the state has ordered counties to pay for that representation. So, we have, Brady has a separate account that he charges those fees to. There's a couple of different ways that the, the amounts are audited. It first goes through the court. So, the attorney will send it in voice to court administration. The judge reviews it. The judge orders the county to pay for it. And then those court orders come to my office along with the invoices. And we review them just to see if there's any reason that we should be challenging the fees. So, if they look like they're reasonable for what's being asked, then I sign off on them. And just for the board's information, the attorneys are getting paid, I think it's eighty dollars an hour for this representation, which in the scheme of things, if you're trying to financially support a law office, is not a great amount. So.
Well, that's if our electrical contractors get paid.
And, Madam Chair, Molly, a funding source for that fund, is that all basically the levy? In other words, there's no monies other than we, it comes out of?
Not that I'm aware of. Brady can probably answer.
Yeah, it's just levy that.
Okay.
I can't remember when that started. Eighteen years ago?
Oh, I haven't.
Maybe longer, but the state used to pay those. And then there was a, I can't remember who made the decision. It was state law or the courts. But it came down and said that it's no longer paid by them. It's now paid by the counties and by court order.
It'd be nice if we could just make state laws and pass them on to the state and tell them to pay for it. Jeff had an answer to your first question, Commissioner Gammel.
Yeah, Commissioner, the CR BPS was a, a payment on the work that we had done up at the YMCA that fell through the cracks. So, there was an invoice sent that hadn't been paid. So, this was a payment for a service that was already prepared.
Okay. Yeah, right, yeah, okay. And I, Madam Chair, if I may, then to, there will be a Town Hall meeting for District Two, which is Thursday, October twenty-seventh. And that's at the Community Center from six-thirty to eight. And, you know, mentioned initially when I had announced this without the date in mind, that Public Health and Service and Highway Department, department heads would take questions at that, at that meeting. So, as it is right now, the meeting is, is scheduled for Thursday, October twenty-seventh, six-thirty to eight o'clock at the Community Center, District Two.
Okay. I have a couple of comments. I think after you have your meeting in Hovland, I'd like to schedule something with Jeff in the West End. I'm getting calls and concerns about both the school levy and our levy. And I'd like to have a public information before we vote. I know some people have already voted, you know, absentee, but I think we just need to get some things cleared out so people can understand. It's, it's a dicey thing. They want education, but they know that our percentage of the levy is pretty high right now. So, I think both Hovland and, when that's done and Gary has his, I can schedule something. The other thing is that when we put here that a quorum of Cook County Commissioners may be in attendance, I didn't go to one meeting, and that was the social justice. Did either one of you go to social justice yesterday at noon?
We were, we were at a different meeting yesterday.
Okay.
Two of us.
Well, I had a call about that. And then they said, well, maybe either one of you would be there. So, I said, well, I'm going to back off of it. Is there some way we can say each week that the coming week may have a quorum and a meeting?
Yeah, that's why we're supposed to go through the administrator. That was going to be my friendly reminder when we're doing all of this because Frank yours is listed on here as a, as a meeting. And as always, when they're on here, I announce them to the public. And I see that the chamber's not on here, but I think it was on the past one. But yes, when we get invites, here's an oddity that came up about a month ago. There was a request for us to make bowls for empty bowls. And so, I forwarded it to Jeff and responded, you may not know, but we all can't just go do functions that he wants to come to. We need, so if you get a response from all the commissioners saying you want to make empty bowls, that'd be great if all five of us could make bowls together. But it would have to be listed as a public meeting. And so, she said she would get back to me and we didn't have all of us on the same day making bowls. But I mean, this is why we need to bring things through Jeff. And it's going to be training the public also to let the public know if there's a request of us. When you get requests at your Town Hall meetings, hey, can you guys come? It, it has to go to Jeff. And he'll get it to us and find out how many of us are coming and going and list it.
Wow.
I know, it's a huge.
So, in other words, last night for the Women's Economic Meeting?
Yep. I couldn't make it at the last minute. But if three of us had been there, that would have had it been listed.
Okay, I, I couldn't have thought of that in advance. I mean, that just sprung on me that day. So, I mean, I know that we need to be sensitive to this issue. And, but there's, there is also wiggle room in that.
There is wiggle room. If we're not conducting or discussing.
Someone's walking through the door.
No, but if we're not conducting or discussing business. And another thing is transparency. The public wants to know that we're doing this and that we're serious about it. You know, I just, at Carol Echols' funeral, I was sitting with my grandma and, you know, just so you know, sorry, Grandma, she's eighty-six. And some of the women from her table, they were talking about back in the day, the wives, this is how we can say back in the day, the wives of the male commissioners would get together. And then when the commissioners were done, they would all have lunch afterwards. And I'm like, well, legally, we can't do that anymore. And they had no idea. And so, they wanted us to put an article in the paper that explained that we can't, she's like, you guys just don't all go to lunch together? And I'm like, well, yeah, at the desk during the meeting, we all eat together, but that's about it. And so, it's a, it's a tough one for people to understand. Commissioner Gammel?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. And I certainly appreciate the, the value of the organizational structure that facilitates processes. It's something with, at the Community Center with the Board of Trustees, that you have all these different entities that are under the umbrella of the Board of, Board of Trustees at the Community Center. But oftentimes, the entities went to the commissioners and then they lobby commissioners. And it didn't go through, go through the board. And why, why do you have a board if the board isn't going to make an assessment and come to the board with a full recommendation? So, getting that organization, understanding the intent of that. The intent, as you say, is transparency, coordination and awareness. And, and so, I certainly appreciate that it, it is convoluted because meetings come up and different things. So, but anything that, that comes up, we think that might have mutual interest. If what we're saying, that our policy in that regard is just forward it so that way it comes out to us. We, we understand that when somebody says, well, I'll send this up to the commissioners or I'll send it to, you know, the chair and they can send it to you. And I said, no, really, it has to go to the administrator because that's not how it works. So, I, I think our intent isn't to circumvent, you know, what we're trying to do. It's just we have to learn and grow into the administrator role and publicly.
And another point is to not make assumptions. Because you said, you know, maybe someone else would be interested. Let's just release all that stress of us making assumptions. And we'll just give it to Jeff.
He can make the assumption.
Yeah, he can assume we all want to go with everything.
We'll just give it to you and you can get what you want.
And forward it. Okay. Commissioner Moe, are you available for WTIP tomorrow morning?
I am.
Okay. So, on the list of meetings to come up, what's not on this list, which will be on next week's list, but the Chamber Gala is October twenty-fifth. Tickets are available. So, that'll be on there. What is on here is October twenty-fifth, there will be a presentation to the county board and elected officials, two to four, on public information for elected officials by Joseph Kelly. It's not a formal county board commissioner meeting, but there may be a quorum in attendance. No action will be taken. There's also a public meeting on October nineteenth in this room from six to eight. I will be leading that one with Jeff. And that's on what services are available for individuals who visit and live in Cook County. There may be a quorum at that meeting. And then, as Frank had said, there's the meeting in Hovland on October twentieth at six P.M. And Commissioner Gammel, Thursday, October twenty-seventh at the Community Center at six-thirty P.M. And hopefully, that covers for this week. And a note to the public, if you see all of us or a quorum of us at a meeting, we are not intentionally trying to violate any rules or laws. We just really love our community and like to go to everything.
Yes.
So, with that, can I get, we're not going to adjourn. We're going to take a break because we'll be back at one of the ITV rooms. So, no adjourning.
So, we're doing October twenty-sixth.
Commissioner Guker?
Yes, sir.
October twenty-sixth, I actually.
So, how about, what's the first?
Tuesday?
First meeting of them.
Tuesday?
Thursday?